Alright, since we are gonna start the study session regarding the what the partnership, I'd like to say with the Crestwood School District and the Warren Valley Golf Course. I want to be clear to the residents that are at home and those who are watching. We do have representation from the Isa Brothers LLC, Matt Schenck is here with us. We do also have the Superintendent Dr. Joe Musalem, his builder, his architect. And then we also have many of the trustees that are also present with us and former trustees that are here with us present. And so you're gonna go through a quick presentation. I just wanna kinda recap for any of the council members that were not at this meeting. The purpose of this discussion is to find a solution. And some solutions may be favorable for others, it may not be favorable for the others. The truth is, you have two options. And from what I, you know, I really looked at this and had some conversation with some residents. The two options that it seems like is, you either take 100 cars off of Warren, or you leave 100 cars onto Warren. But if you take the cars off of Warren, you're forcing them to all go west onto Warren, which is gonna potentially cause some residents to go through the neighborhoods, through Norborn and Berwin, and you're gonna get a lot of 2-3 traffic there. The question is, I know trustee Janun said, what's, you know, is it, what's going the additional mile? To save, you know, for the sake of safety. And I think almost every single parent at drop-off is gonna be okay with that. I think the issue you're gonna feel is the ones that don't follow the rule and they're flying through the neighborhoods because we're seeing that today. But this needs to be a partnership. It can be a partnership amongst the community. Needs to be a partnership amongst the residents, and it has to be a partnership with this council administration. But I'm gonna leave it to you guys to present, but that's, I feel like, the two options that we have before us here today. And we got our police chief here, maybe he could give us some insight on kind of helping out with the flow of traffic. But Dr. Musalem, I am gonna give you the option to speak here first.
Thank you, Council Chair Badun, City Council.
Hang on one second. Vince, nothing from the audience, please. Thank you.
I'm trying to get this to connect, and I'm not being very...
Councilman Ahmad is actually very good at it, so.
So first off, if I had known legal counsel would be here, I would've brought my legal counsel. I just want, I just want, okay. Okay, just so that my legal counsel could've been here to answer any questions. So at this point, if there's any questions asked of our district from legal counsel, I will not answer. I will direct that directly to my legal counsel. Just wanna make that clear.
And again, I think ultimately, Dr. Musalem, this is, it looks like the two, both the district and the brother, the the Isa Brothers LLC has a partnership here already.
Yes, no.
I don't think it's like, you know, unless, I mean, we don't even have special, we don't have a legal counsel here either.
No, we do, we do, but remember, I'm representing the district, I'm not representing Yusef. So I have to make sure whatever is answered, I'm answering in representation to the district. So I don't wanna answer any questions that my legal counsel should be the ones answering. I just wanted to make that clear. So the Isa Brothers and the Crestwood School District and the City of Dearborn Heights, we've had a great partnership. Especially when Mr. Isa took over the golf course. One of the things that he did right away was he said, "You guys can use my parking lot because I know you need it for pickup and drop-off."
I need to also pause you there for a second.
Yes.
I had this conversation with Mr. Isa. City Council was very adamant, very adamant at the time of the, you know, the choosing of who's gonna take over the golf course. No matter whom it was, that the Riverside School can continue to use the parking lot. So like, that was affirmative from the beginning. And it was in our agreement, and I believe it might even be in our contract as well. Maybe his special legal counsel, Matt Schenck, can know more about that. But I believe that was, it was one of the rules that we specified, saying we wanna make sure Riverside, as long as they're around, they can use that parking lot. But continue.
No, thank you, and I do appreciate city councils, as I've said multiple times and I've come in front of the council, is that city council has been extremely supportive of the school district, and I know they're extremely supportive of all the school districts in the city, so I do appreciate your support.
Respectfully too, the mayor also did say he wanted that as well. So we, I do wanna recognize Mayor Bill Beatty for saying that as well, cuz he did.
So, and I appreciate everyone, all city government officials. So until this pops up, I'll just talk through a few things.
Keep saying, "Don't open up the shared drive and start the software application."
So the idea through this partnership is, in order for us as a school district to use district funds, we have to have a sublease or a lease with the property that we do not own in order for us to use district funds to redo the pavement, to create a thoroughway in between the two properties because we will be impacting not only our district's property, but we'll also be impacting the city's property or the Warren Valley parking lot. As Council Chair Badun, as you mentioned, you are right. There are two options on the table right now, and those two options are, you know, we can continue status quo or, and we'll have continued 75 cars, 50, 75 cars lined up on Warren Avenue, especially during dismissal time. Or we can pool those cars, 75 to 100 cars, up into the loop, which would start at Riverside Middle School through the Warren Valley parking lot, where students would have more space to be dropped off, to be picked up. And it will create a much smoother traffic flow, not only for Warren and Beach Daily, but also for the school, but more, but also it'll eliminate the congestion that occurs at Warren Valley's entry and exit area currently. Through this process, there are, you know, some things that we have been in conversation with the county on in reference to the timing of the lights on Warren Avenue, in reference to a left turn signal on Berwin, as well as, you know, looking at different lighting configurations to make this work to the best ability we can. There is no perfect solution. There is no silver bullet. As I had mentioned in the last city council meeting, our schools were built in the 1960s, which they weren't built to have, you know, 100 to 200 cars dropping students off and picking students up. They were built more for students to walk to school. And one of the things that if you look at districts that are being built in cities, you'll notice that they, when they build a school, they have a large piece of land. They'll push that school as far back as they can on that piece of land. They'll connect the main roads to a dry, to a federal road, so that you don't have that backup on the main roads. Dearborn Heights, all of our schools, you know, not just Crestwood, but, you know, D7, Robishaw, I mean, all, we're all landlocked. And it creates these traffic issues. Part of our commitment when we move forward with our bond was to do whatever we could to alleviate the traffic on Warren and Beach Daily for the safety of the students, as well as for reduction in congestion of traffic. And, you know, I, I know that, you know, there, there's a lot of opportunity here where we can continue to work together to make this work, and I, and I know Mr. Isa wants to make it work, and I know city council and the mayor's office wanna make it work. We wanna make it work, and our goal here during this study session is if you have any questions or you'd like to any clarification on, you know, different things that were brought up from the last city council meeting, we have our construction team, as well as our team from Crestwood, to answer any, like, technical questions as well.
I'm just kinda thinking out loud. Is there any way possible? Maybe the builders and engineers can figure this out. You can some way allow the approach, you know, we're kinda forcing everybody right. Is there an option for it to go either left or right?
How's this any different than, than Crestwood High School? Crestwood High School, you're only forced to go right when you exit.
But you have Wilson that has a stoplight that allows you to turn left.
They don't, they have a sign there across the street that says, does not allow you to go through. Yeah, so, I mean, like, me personally, I do, when I exit, I do make the right-hand turn. I do go down Wilson, make my U-turn, and then come back out. So I am driving through the neighborhood.
Yeah, so you're gonna have that.
You're gonna have that regardless.
And you know what else, and this is like, I'm thinking from a safety concern. What you're gonna have is, people that live on Berwin, I should say, I live on Berwin. Mo Badun, hypothetically speaking, lives on Berwin. He's got a son, Haile Medina, that play outside. And between the hours of 3:00 and, you know, 2:00, by the time of release, you have all these people speeding in and out of there. It's gonna happen. And then they're gonna go, they're gonna go down Berwin, and they're gonna make a left on Hess, and they're gonna get back onto Beach Daily. They're gonna go down Beach Daily, and they're gonna make a right onto Warren.
Well, we cannot control the traffic that's making that right-hand turn. That, that's something that we can't control. You know, there's a lot of other school districts that dictate, you know, right-hand turns only and left-hand turns.
I agree. I mean, and the safer route, by the way, the ultimate safe route is to always force people to go right. To do the left, and people coming west, and you're trying to force people to go left without a traffic light, is just a chaotic.
You're gonna create another traffic light at a new approach, and that's, I don't think that's something that anybody wants to entertain.
So the reason why we were saying to push everybody right, and I get where you're coming from, Council Chair, if we have an option to go left or right, the problem with going left and right is you would have to have somebody stationed, literally directing traffic the entire time. Stopping cars from coming and going, and you'd have to add another light over there, which could create more congestion.
Let me ask you this. What if we got a light that sits on the exit, and, and it's green and red, you know, obviously it's a light, and when it stops, it stops people on traffic on Beach Daily, or I'm sorry, on Warren, and it allows you to turn, and we can maybe discuss with the county, that way now, I mean, this is just an option. Yeah, you know, and maybe, you know, this can continue, but eventually we find a way to get Wayne County to support us. And I think if we come together and ask Wayne County, "Please put us, put us a traffic light right here," and allow the district to control it. And so that you guys control the red and, you know, or the police department on drop-off and pickup. This light will now allow you to be able to go, because it's, now it's greed for the people leaving the parking lot. Then you can, you know, it can go back to red for the people in the parking lot, and allow the traffic to flow through, and then go back, and then now this allows it. Look, guys, we have to find the solution, you're right. But the solution also, to me, I'm just thinking, isn't to send cars down Berwin.
Council Chair.
But I think this is the solution, and I don't know how it just registered in my mind, but I.
So I could, if I may, we did have that conversation. Our concern is the light on Beach Daily and Warren. Where if that light is not timed exactly with that turning light that you would add, you'll be creating another bottleneck.
On Beach Daily, what?
Uh, Beach Daily and Warren. You'll be creating another bottleneck for people going left. Because now you'll have cars stopped at that, which will back everybody else up. So that's why.
You're right, you're right.
You know, so I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's tough.
Council Chair, really, the only way to solve the traffic in that hole would honestly be a roundabout. But I don't think we have the room for it.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
A roundabout, that area.
We don't, we don't have the funds or...
To keep traffic flowing in all directions.
I'm sorry, can, can I connect mine for one second?
Oh, yeah, I don't, is there anything I should do?
Uh, just take it, unplug it.
Okay.
Especially.
No, no, I.
Councilman Ahmad has his own.
That's good.
There we go. I don't know why, he's just still showing though.
Doesn't matter, just. Is yours plugged in still?
No. I mean, I could minimize it, but that would work.
IT's not the greatest thing. Tom, are those new glasses?
Okay, now, and that's showing. So this is the same thing I discussed last time, Doc. If you go through that parking lot, and you go, you make like a drive-through, I know it's gonna take some of the parking lot, parking spots and teachers' parking lot. If you go through here like, like a one-car drive-through, all the way, make sure like, it's like a drive-through, they cannot exit, and then they can go all the way and exit on Beach Daily. So this way, they have the right to make a right on Beach Daily, then they can go wherever they wanna go. Is that a possibility?
What about the ones that have to go to Joy Road? You can't go left?
It's gonna hold up people if you wait for people to turn left.
What about, you have a huge part of the district that still lives off of precinct one, which is Joy Road area off of Beach Daily? Or what if they wanna go where, where Ben Corliss?
So unless we have two options, one, they can only make right on Warren, whoever's going that way, or they can take that drive-through and exit on Beach Daily.
But you can't because of the bus draw. There's a bus draw.
The buses are coming out there too.
From where, from the teachers' parking spot?
So that parking area over there is, is our bus loop area? Because that's the only area that can actually handle our buses to make a complete loop.
Okay, that's a different story. Okay, I have one question for you. Leave this open for a second. Let's just say I'm a parent. I come inside, we're gonna be coming in from here, right? You see with this, oh, you can just see it. Okay, do you see the hand? There we go. Oh, you. This was discussed earlier. I'm a parent. Here's the school. Car comes in, supposed to take them all the way over, right?
Correct.
What, how are we gonna control the parent that comes here, that's good, opens the door and just walks off?
Staff. And it's, and that's what we currently do. Right now, our staff already controls the traffic. And our, we have our security team, we have our security team who works that parking area. And then we have our administrators and some of our staff who work the other parking lot area to make sure cars keep moving. Currently, we have a decent flow because people have adjusted to our expectations. That's why when you drive by, you see all those horses.
Begin to the mic.
That's why when you drive by, you see all those horses, and we leave them, then we put them up, and people are following that routine. They really are. Administration was here, but they had to leave. And what we would do is, we would have to condition the community on this new process and this new route. I will tell you, 90%, 95% of our parents will follow through. They do. Yeah, you have your 3%, 5% that don't, but that's where our team comes in, and that's where our team explains the process. And, you know, the first, you know, if we were to move forward with this, yes, the first two, three weeks, we'd have to, like, be out there in double force, making sure everybody understands, but that would be a continuous process. And honestly, like I said, 95% of our parents, they, they come through. They, they do what needs to be done because it comes down to the safety of the children.
For sure.
Question. Right now, do you just come in on the east driveway, go on the west driveway? Where do you, where do you have, put the seizure out?
So right now, we're coming in from the Warren Valley parking lot. We don't, we use our parking lot as a small loop, but that only fits maybe 15 cars, if that, for a small loop. And then the larger loop is, they come in currently from the Warren Valley parking lot. They loop around in the quadrant that we're requesting the sublease, and then they come out, they exit out of the Warren Valley parking lot. The problem with that is, number one, we still have a backup of cars, of at least 50 cars on Warren Avenue back to Beach Daily and beyond at times. And the second problem is, we're taking away from Mr. Isa's business during golf season because his, the golfers and those that are coming can't get in. They're stuck in that traffic. So they're late to tee times, and, you know, that's, it's not fair for Mr. Isa and his team. As, you know, so we're trying to find a way to resolve this where we can support Mr. Isa, and at the same time, we can create a situation where we're pulling at least 100 cars off of Warren Avenue.
I could tell you that when I drive through Warren, it's so annoying when, when, when you guys are, it's, it's the worst experience. Crestwood is much better.
Yeah.
You know, Kenlock and Riverside, wow, do I hate those two.
And, and here's, here's the irony. Crestwood is better for one of the reasons is because a lot of the people, there are just students that are driving. So you might be like, but they're not parents pulling up, picking up their kids and pulling out. They're getting in their car, and they're going.
Unless they have different time of dismissal.
Correct. Riverside, you have 1,200 kids being dismissed at the same time. And that's, it's a logistical issue.
And it's wanting to get bigger.
I hope so, God willing.
I, I was there a couple of times. I couldn't figure out what was going on. It was like, looked like people were doing different things, you know, no one was following a specific pattern. Can you show the people at home exactly what you plan on doing with this? I mean, I've got calls about it.
I can't. I gotta plug back in?
Yeah, go on.
Do you guys have this at your place?
This? No. We, we, we have a direct plugin. We don't do the, the wire. For that reason.
We also didn't get a $120 million bond.
Well, no, this was without the bond.
I know.
Hey, that was through cost-effective analysis.
I like that. My bad.
Okay, so I think I'm good.
I pick on Joe once in a while.
Please, pick on me whenever you want, it's fine.
Mr. Schenck, while you're here and he's figuring this out, before he can answer the question, oh, never mind, go ahead. You got it.
So the proposed plan, real quick, so.
Hey, Ray.
As, as we look at this, you see the blue-lined out areas, the area we're requesting the sublease. That area requesting the sublease will allow us to move away from using Mr. Isa's entry and exit area.
You wanna stand up or go there? Take the mic?
Sure.
Unplug the mic, yep.
Now I feel like a superstar.
You are a superstar.
I mean, you're a superintendent.
You need a pointer.
I know, you know what, I forgot it today. I had it last time. So this area here is where we're requesting to have the sublease. This area here is our current, this is, this is our property. Currently, our, we use two loops. We have a short loop here, which, this is like, I guess, at 10, 15 cars. And then we bring cars in here, and they loop here, they get, kids get picked up and dropped off here, and they come out. But this is where the congestion happens, and then we have a backup on Warren. Now, the backup is vast, is more during dismissal than arrival, cuz again, you have everyone leaving at the same time. Can you click to the next slide? Just hit the arrow right. Okay, so the idea is, oh, actually, go one more, because this is just going over what I, this is, this is what's currently happening, this is the plan. Currently, cars are lined up on Warren, congestion for the golf course. Cars come through, pickup and drop-off is here, cars come out and they exit. Now, when the cars exit here, we got a problem. Some cars go left, some cars go right. The problem we face with the cars going left is the safety of the kids as the kids are trying to cross the street over there. The pro, and then the people that go right, a lot of them don't wanna go left because they gotta wait for the kids to cross, and now you have double congestion. The cars that go right, they go down Berwin. These cars are already going down Berwin. And I will tell you, I've spoken to neighbors on Berwin who know me personally, who have called me, and they did bring up that concern to me. Our suggested plan is, if we're able to sublease this area, we will be redoing the entire paving over in this area. This area here.
Or the whole place.
This area here. Man, I wish it was my personal pocketbook, but.
We're not negotiating, we're not done negotiating.
This area here is where we have to create two thoroughways. A thoroughway here and a thoroughway here. Both thoroughways will have a gate so that it can lock up, but Mr. Isa will have a key to that gate, cuz in the agreement, it's a reciprocal agreement, where when school is closed, he can use our parking lot as well, if he has, if he needs overflow. In the sublease area here, he will have complete access to it at all times. With this new plan, we come in, which, that top arrow there is our current Riverside Middle School entry. Cars will loop all the way around here. Students will be picked up and dropped off, so a drop-off can be over here, but pickup will be on this side. And the reason for this, like I said, pickup is when you have the most cars you have to get off of Warren. This will get us up to 100 cars, if not more, off of Warren Avenue. Currently, we're only getting maybe 50 cars total off of Warren Avenue, if that. Now, where the next piece comes in is they loop, and then they come back through to our parking lot, and they exit, our exit. So no longer are we bottlenecking or creating congestion.
How are you gonna stop them though, from just?
We'll have barriers. We'll have those movable barriers, just like we currently have. You know, you see those horses, like I was saying, we'll just put those horses over there so they can't go through. It's the same thing over here, where we will, if we're gonna have everybody turn right, when they come out, they're not gonna be able to go left. They're gonna have to follow through and follow up going left.
That driveway's gonna get redone, that approach.
Over here?
So it's gonna be a, yeah, it's gonna be a right turn only, right?
It's gonna be a right turn only, correct. That's the idea. The reason why we're saying we didn't wanna go left turn as well is because then you're gonna have a double bottleneck over at Beach Daily and Warren intersection. So again, the red dots is currently what we have. The green arrow is what the plan is.
And it's ultimately the same thing.
The difference is, we're gonna get up to 100 cars off of the road.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying you're already using this process, we're just getting things away from the golf course. Mr. Isa, do you wanna say something? Can you take the mic?
Which I don't mind this, but when I open up for business, I'm pretty sure, hopefully, we get busy there and stuff. I mean, like, the parents come prior, like, an hour prior to school, before school bell rings. They park their cars there, so the whole parking lot is full of cars. And now when they're exiting out, they're using the other two as well. So when they're getting out, they're like, you know, they're lined up from like the building all the way through. So when the cars are coming through, they're blocking people off. So like, they don't have the respect, like, to stop and then go through, so they block, like, people trying to get in and out. This was like, our biggest problem. I don't mind them using the parking lot, I don't mind them, whatever, you know, it's okay. Just, the problem is just getting in and out is our problem. So I don't know if that's even gonna, I mean, that's gonna help, but what can, what's gonna stop them from coming an hour early and use, and parking throughout the whole parking lot till the kids get out of school?
That's, that would be on, yeah.
Yeah, but who's gonna stop them? But who's gonna stop them?
And, and you know, I mean, really, I think through, I think through great communication, you can say things like, you know, this is an immediate request.
I don't wanna be the guy, the bad, oh, you can't, but.
No, no, immediate request.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, if the school, the school board's gotta tell them, "Listen, you cannot, this is, this is your only way in and out is from here." You cannot use park there, you guys can't, just, you know.
School resource officer ticketing.
I've got a couple of questions. Is this, this proposed area to sublease, is that cut off from the rest of the parking lot? Cuz what's gonna keep someone from just getting out of that area and going back to the golf course entrance?
So we're, we're gonna be blocking off all ex, all other entryways by movable objects that we can place and remove.
So you're gonna put them all the way down that, that north side?
So currently, you already have a natural beam here.
Yeah, the berm, yeah.
So you would put barrier here, and then a barrier along here.
But those are not like to stay, they're not like, yeah.
They're temp, they're movable, they're temporary. Look, at, at the end of the day, there's, you know, a couple of things we can do. I mean, these, these two entry and exit areas currently have gates. Those gates are closed during certain times. Those gates can remain closed until 20 minutes before dismissal. I mean, those are things that we can do. And the other part behind it is, this area in here is also gonna be staff parking. So if you got staff parked in there, there's, you're only gonna have room for the loop because staff needs parking. So, because our whole idea with this area here is we're gonna open this up for visitor parking. Ultimately, at the end of the day, and, you know.
That's not a big parking lot, by the way.
No, it's not. It's not.
We used it for city council.
So ultimately, at the end of the day, that, you know, representing the district, the reason why, you know, we've brought this is because we're trying to find a solution to a problem that was brought to my attention back in 2019 by community, by, by council, by the mayor's office, by the police department. And to this day, people talking about the safety of that corner.
You plan on having only pickup in that one area?
Correct.
So what, what's gonna keep someone from jumping into a car when they're in the stacking, stacking line?
So that's something that we have to work with. Look, there's a lot of things that we're gonna do everything we can to control. I, we don't have an answer for all that, other than, we're gonna continue to pressure that this is what we need, this is how it needs to be done. Uh, we're gonna work with Dearborn Heights Police. Our SRO has been doing a great job with this thus far. People, people are being ticketed that are not following, you know, the, the traffic laws and the rules. And at the end of the day, I can tell you this. Even if we created what everybody would consider a perfect system, we're still gonna have those issues.
Where are you gonna cross the kids over two lanes of traffic to get to that area?
So right here, what will end up happening is, we will have a crosswalk, which will be manned by our security team.
And it'll be, it'll be a crosswalk, correct?
Yeah.
So on rainy day, I'm just being devil's, on rainy days, the kids are, you're, I'm not saying forced, but you're gonna have them stand out there in the rain to wait to be picked up?
Well, when it rains, yeah, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll be, look, like I said, there's no perfect answer. The, the thing is, no matter where you go, whatever school district you attend, there are gonna be variables that people... The, the thing is, no matter where you go, whatever school district you attend, there are gonna be variables that people are gonna have to adjust to. Weather, rain, so on so forth, it's just the reality of it. And what we're trying to do, look, at the end of the day, if this is approved and we move forward with it, we're gonna make it work to best of our ability. If at the end of the day, it's not approved and we don't move forward with it, we're gonna continue with what we're doing, and we're gonna try to make it as good as we can. Ultimately, we're just bringing the best case scenario that we and the architectural team and the engineering team has come up with. And it's trying to put our best foot forward and finding a solution to a problem that's been in place for a long time.
I would ask, I would ask, he makes a very good point. If this is approved, it should say something in there that we can build where kids can sit, stand under if it's snowing or raining. Maybe right there on the easement, if we can put something where kids could, you know.
You're talking as if like a canopy?
Like a, like a, yeah, like it can even be.
Like a bus stop thing.
Like a bus stop.
Yeah. Something that if it's raining or snowing, you wanna make sure that, I mean, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Issa's okay with that. But then again, you don't want people to be start standing under there and hanging out under there and.
Like you guys said, whatever we do, it's not gonna solve the problem.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent, it can probably fifty percent solve, which, which is okay. My main concern is, just don't block the avenue, don't block the, it's one way in and out, that's it. Other than that, use the parking lot.
Yeah.
At the same time comes the church, you're talking twelve hundred students, you're not gonna be able to have twelve hundred students under the canopy, so.
So I would.
I didn't fore, I should've suggested, but I didn't.
Well, right now they are, yes, they are, actually, uh, De'ev, you are right, right now they are walking out in the rain and stuff, because they're still getting picked up in that parking lot, there's no difference. It's, still, that's what it is. Now, I saw Jake, which I appreciate, he was taking those notes down, and he wrote down exactly what you said, so that they can go back and they can look at that and see if that's a design, something they can do, and we would talk. We're not closing the door on anything. You know, we're, we're willing to look at whatever's worked, because again, I wanna reiterate, we're just trying to figure out what's gonna be best for the kids and the community, and you know, and what's gonna help Mr. Issa, so we don't interrupt his business. Um, and ultimately, you know, we're, we're here, again, just saying, this is what we think is best, it is not perfect. A perfect scenario, you don't wanna know what a perfect scenario is, because a perfect scenario is gonna cost a lot of money.
New school.
Yeah, you're talking about almost two hundred million dollars in a perfect scenario. Okay? And I think one of the things too, is a lot of times people in community don't understand that how much it costs to build schools. A brand new high school, if you're gonna do a top tier, like, top line high school, if you, and I would assume you'd want to. You're looking at a hundred and eighty to almost two hundred million. A middle school, you're looking at about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty million, and a elementary, you're looking at anywhere from sixty to seventy-five million. This is why, and, and, you know, the state of Michigan just did a major infrastructure review of all schools. And I can share that report with any city council member if they want, and it shows like how bad the infrastructure is currently in our state. Because again, you go back to it, schools are built, they're maintained, but we're at a very static allotment of funds where there's only so much we can do.
Yeah, have you explored the option of, uh, separate dismissal times?
The problem we have with that, with separate dismissal times, is you have parents who have kids in the high school, elementary, and the middle school. So if you add another dismissal time, you're, you're creating more of a havoc for parents. And then we also have busing. Buses are on a schedule based on levels.
Look, the way I look at this is.
How about busing the kids over to Crestwood, let them pick up there?
Well, what end up happening, I love that, but what end up happening is you'll just take the problem, move it.
Yeah, not just kidding anyway.
Yeah, no, I know, but.
Look, I think ultimately, the, the, there isn't, there isn't a perfect solution. The truth is, this is helping out the golf course, the, the district is doing its studies, they're paying for it, they're already doing this. So, I, I don't, I don't really see much, but I would like to hear from, uh, Mr. Shank, who's the attorney, about regarding, I know some concerns were brought up, does this in any way, shape, or form affect the liquor license that is currently at the other property? If so, what are your thoughts? I mean, we wanna make sure that, I know you represent the Issa brothers. We, we wanna know, or maybe if we got, is Gary on? Uh, just to hear about.
No, we're, we're happy to work with the school district to help solve this problem.
I know, so will it affect in each way, shape, or form if we sublease this parking, you know, because that's what, 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 what our, what the mayor's attorney told us.
It has the potential to impact the liquor license. So, we're gonna talk to the district's attorney tomorrow and see if we can find some solution that allows it to coexist. But still allows them to use their grant money.
Okay, I mean, obviously, that's, I mean, that's a, you know, that's a big piece of the puzzle right there. At least for me, I mean, it's like, can't take that away, and I know that there's something with school districts and liquor license, so we wanna make sure that we dotterize, cross our Ts on that.
Correct, yep.
Council chair, maybe you can answer a question, um, as far as liability, um, are you gonna have double liability? I mean, who's liable for that space during, you know, uh, so if some golfers come in on the weekend and get in a fight and someone gets killed, the school is responsible for that?
We hold liability on that property.
Total liability. Twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
And really, the liability wouldn't even fall on the Issa brothers, it would fall on the city, if somebody, if something happened to somebody on that property.
That's what I'm saying, anyway, who's, well, then why is it different with this then?
Well, because now we're negotiating this contract now. What happened here, we're telling him, you have to have that insurance.
Maybe this contract should be between the school district and the city of Dearborn Heights then.
It is.
I mean, instead of the Issa brothers.
And, and. It's intertwined, it's a, it's a part way, that's why we're all in here.
It's a three-way?
A three-party agreement, yep.
So the way the contract is written currently is, we are receiving permission from the city of Dearborn Heights, Heights to sublease from the Issa brothers to allow. And if, when the, if the city would get permission, it would then go to our board, our board would then vote on it, okay, thank you.
If the city was to get permission for us to sublease from Mr. Issa, then we'd have to go to my school board, my school board would have to vote on it, and then it would have to be finally approved by Mr. Issa. And that's why our attorney is gonna contact Mr. Issa's attorney first thing tomorrow and work out some details as needed.
Any other questions from council members, treasurer?
Oh, councilman, uh, chair, maybe I just wanted to add, just 'cause I wanna make sure this is clear. Whatever contract the city council would approve in order, because you ultimately, the city council can ultimately say, we're not allowing you to sublease from the Issa brothers. You have that authority. Because I just wanna make sure the community. Uh, because I, someone had mentioned, I heard someone just mentioned that the city should be the ones that do it. What will happen is whatever city council sees is what would go to my board, which is what would go to Mr. Issa, it would not be any different. It would be the exact same verbiage and everything, and that is why it's imperative that, um, our attorneys from Trune uh, speak with the Issa brothers attorneys as soon as possible to look at that language before we bring it back to the city council.
And I would want something very specific and bold, uh, one, making sure about the liquor license, the insurance of being, you know, you know, maintained. I'm talking like, snow, uh, we, I mean, come on, do the whole parking lot, I think maybe that could be our. You know, and then maybe, maybe we can.
Also discuss a potential like, hey, we're, we're getting, you know, I, look, I'm gonna be honest. This is a great, this is a great win for the district, this is a great win for the city, this is a great win for the Issa brothers. I think the city can ultimately come back and still say, hey, what you're doing the parking lot, might as well do the rest of the parking lot. Talk, talk.
There's your president saying no.
So, I could just say this, first off, my board, again, I'm not speaking for Youssef, I'm speaking on behalf of the district. Um, ultimately, anything would have to come in front of our, my board, and my board would have to approve. But you have to also keep in mind, not just bond money, but any fiduciary monies from the school district cannot be spent on property that we don't own, or we don't at least lease or something.
She wanna sell us that parking lot?
Well, we can, we can lease you the whole parking lot.
And extend it.
That's it. I don't know if the, council chair, chief, do you have anything to add, or everything looks good? Give them a mic.
Just staff, just staff and ourselves, recently put, that's the other, trying to help with traffic, it's worked.
I'm late to the party.
It's not, it's not a talking point, he's okay, it's not a strong point.
And I, and I do, I, I wanna, I do wanna give credit to Dearborn Heights Police Department and, and the chief. They have really been extremely, extremely resourceful and helpful, uh, over, at all of our, all of our areas.
Councilwoman Breyer?
My only concern is that the two leases, the lease to Mr. Issa and yours run contiguous, the same amount of time. I don't like the fifty years at all.
So I, it wasn't one of my slides, because I remember, uh, Councilman Constant brought that up, it wasn't one of the slides. I've reached out to our attorneys to look at what are some different things we can do in terms of the, the lease terms, uh, knowing that fifty years is not an option for the city council.
Right.
So, um, we're waiting for some, we, he's looking into some things, and then we'll get back with city council on where we can make that adjustment.
Yeah, ten-year, ten-year renewal.
Any other questions before I take it to the public? I will say, for me, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the council, if you did a hundred-year lease, I think as long as there's a school there and there's a parking lot, we should be able to make it and then be allowed and accessible to, to our residents. These are our residents at the end of the day, these students are our residents, and they're our future. And so to me, it's like, I want this to stay a school, I would love for this to, I want this to stay a parking lot, and then hopefully there's a continued, you know, relationship, but I can also concede the concerns of the, of the councilwoman in the sense that, what if in twenty years, Mr. Issa's like, I don't want nothing to do with this place, and something else happens? I can also see where she says like, we don't want that to be the pivotal point for whatever happens to us in the future.
And we totally understand that.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna take it out to Zoom first, before we open it up to anybody in the audience, so. If you have any questions or concerns and you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we will take it over to public comments in person. You have three minutes, you state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, hang on one second, make sure our nineteen ninety-nine gadget is off.
Nineteen seventy-nine.
No joke, this is, this is from when Bob Constant was on the city.
Can we put one in the contract too?
I'll buy out of my personal account for the.
Marge Horvath. It's actually not even working.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. President.
Wow, I might have reached it.
It's like a kitchen timer.
No, no, it's on.
Is this a part of my three minutes, or are you gonna?
You're at two minutes now.
I mean, we can mark you that way, go ahead.
I'm just, I won't, I won't need three minutes. First of all, thank you for consideration, Mr. Issa. Um, we go back a long way, personally, professionally, and every other way, you.
I need you to state your name, the city.
Yeah, that's actually a good point, Mo Sabal, I am the school board president for Crestwood Schools. I'm also a resident of the city of Dearborn Heights, I live on Evangeline, a longtime resident, and, um, there's three things that I think every city needs to consider, first and foremost, the safety of, of the children, which is always number one to me, irregardless of what it is that we're looking at, the safety of the general public. And third and foremost, obviously, the ease of, um, our businesses, the ability for our businesses to handle their business. And I think this is, there is no silver bullet, there is no perfect answer. There is no hidden two hundred million dollars sitting aside that we can knock all this down and rebuild it, it's impossible. Um, you know, the old saying says insanity is, you know, those that continuously do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result. Nothing is going to change if we leave it, leave it as is. This gentleman's put a lot of money into the facility over there, I mean, if, all you have to do is drive by it, I haven't been in it. But I can tell that there's a lot of investment going into the facility, and his investment should be protected. And this is my fourth child at Riverside, my youngest, thank God he's in eighth grade, I don't have to go back there anymore after this. I'm, I'm telling you, it's, it's a disaster in the morning, it's a disaster in the afternoon. Uh, I drove by this afternoon, he took the bus home, they were crossing kids, and the, the cars were literally backed up into Beach Daily as students were crossing. It's a scary sight, it really is, it's something that we have to take action on. Leaving it the way it is, is not an option, because the first child that gets hurt, and not on wood, thank God, nobody's ever gotten hurt, and nobody ever will. But the continuum of having all these cars backed up onto a major roadway is not good, and shutting off this gentleman's business is not good. I just wanted to add that, thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee president, Mo Sabal.
Lori Moline, Berwin Street, Dearborn Heights. I have a question, looking at the map, and maybe the Issa brothers can answer this for me. You have a separated by a median entrance to your golf course. Now, what I see happening at this, if this was to go through, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna start to have a backup on the center turn lane onto Berwin. So everybody's heading west, they need to get back into the neighborhood, and they're gonna start backing up in that center turn lane. Yes, a left turn light would help, but they can't turn on Norborn, that's a no left. They can't turn on, on Centralia, that's too far east. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna turn into, they're gonna say, I'm not gonna go in that left turn lane, look at, there's fifteen cars. I'm gonna just jut into the golf course, take, go past the first median, loop back around, and use that light to go left or right. Now I can go any way I wanna go. But if you block that off, and I know that's a parking lot for the golfers, but if you block that and made it more of a median further towards the entrance of the golf, the building, then you're gonna eliminate that kind of traffic. Do you see what I'm saying? Well, if you, if you block that median up, so that your more westerly parking lot, they have to go further in to get to it. Right. So, that's what I see parents doing, and the other problem is the fire station. Okay? There's no decision on the fire station yet, and Warren Avenue was one of the decisions. So what happens if we do that? And what happens if there's a fire station? That's not gonna change what's already happening now, okay? But now you're putting in a left turn light, it, I just, I think if you made that middle median at the entrance more filled in, then you're gonna.
That, that results in.
Oh, yeah, because what they were doing in the past, because they couldn't get down Berwin, there's a business on the corner of Berwin and Warren, they were using that alley to get back into the neighborhood, the traffic was insane.
For those that are watching, she's saying.
Close that up. Yep, close it up.
So, you're not, you can't come around.
Yep, it's gonna slow them down, and I get that you wanna use your westerly parking lot, and I get that that's a slight inconvenience for the golfers, but considering the size of that back parking lot, everybody's gonna be wanting to be closest to the building and utilize that one anyway, the, the most southern end of that, northern, northern.
But there are barricades there anyway.
I, I mean, it's, it's a lot prettier than a barricade, right?
Yeah, well, that's a banquet, it's gonna be hard for them. When it's a banquet, it's gonna be hard, like, if you have valet, then they have to exit on, on, on Warren, then come back in, it's gonna be tough.
Not if you have an entrance from the top of the, uh, the top of the driveway.
Yeah, yeah.
He's saying at the top, you can still allow to do it.
Okay.
The first two.
Exactly, I, I mean, everybody's out for themselves and trying to get where they need to go, they don't care about anybody else.
I agree.
Right.
And then it's forcing them to, why they come in here and.
Okay.
So you're just talking those three patches of berm?
Close them up.
Make it one, you don't wanna close them off, you wanna make it one, so you'd have to put.
Got it.
You'd have to put grass and sod and.
Got it.
Maybe beautify it for the golf course.
Well, I'm sure they would wanna do that anyway, they, you know.
Couple of sycamore trees?
Or we can find some fir trees.
How you doing, ma'am?
Hi.
Name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on?
Sue Kaminsky, Ambrose Street, Dearborn Heights. So regardless of what happens, the school's not going away, the kids aren't going away, the fire station may or may not be there. Traffic is a, regardless, and it's not gonna get better. This solution would, A, help the golf course by paving part of it at the school board's expense. It would take some of the traffic off of Warren. Is it still gonna affect Berwin? Yes, is it gonna affect my subdivision in Golfy Manor? Sure. Is there any other solution? It's been years, guys, there's no other solution. Trying to get the gate between Warren Valley and the school district was so hard, you wouldn't even believe it. Now we have people.
Now we have people working together to get a least bad solution. And I don't see anything else. I'm happy that the school district and the city and the police and the city council are working together. That was not always the case. But again, the kids aren't going away. So whether it be a 50-year contract or a five-year contract, first off, as an ex-school board member, I'm not approving a five-year contract and putting in tons of money to pave that. So you've got to work together a little bit. And again, no great solution. This is less bad. Thank you.
Council chair?
Yes, sir.
You know, I've, I've, I've stressed school district, working along with the city for a long time. And in the past, I said, basically, the only thing the city does for a school district is plows the snow around the school. I mean, we don't even pick up their trash or, you know, that could be worked on. And, you know, dialogue between the school district and the city is so important. We had, just had an issue in D7 where a city hired contractor came in on school board property without even notifying the school board, set up a staging area.
Or the city council.
Or anybody. And, you know, and that, that's what we need to, we need to get away from that. We need to get, you know, the communication wide open, working, this is a good start, working together, a project like this, especially where the city, I mean, it's not costing us a penny. You know, and we're getting something really cool out of it. We're getting all kinds of, it's probably going to free us up some police officers, hopefully. Any kind, any, any kind of access with children, it's going to solve a problem for a long time to come. And this is what we, this is what I've been working for, you know, the city, working with our school district, because you can't have one wealth the other.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You've got three minutes.
Renee Myrna. I live on Annapolis, Dearborn Heights. So did you miss me? I've been gone for a little while. I was on Zoom a couple times. I'm not doing that anymore because I fell asleep, so not good. So one thing is I'm really glad to see that you guys stole my thunder because all the notes that I wrote to bring up here, you guys addressed them already about liability and also how to pave certain areas and also staggering the school dismissal times. But I caught one. I got one left that you guys didn't get. So, you know, that new route, hey, I agree 100%. That looks good. The problem is, when you get a parent whose kid is lagging back in school and they're in a single file line and they're parked there waiting for their kid to catch up to the car, holding everybody up, what's to, what's to stop them from just stopping and waiting for their kid to come out? And, and then, I'm sorry, but it's like a black hole. If they get in there, it's sort of like a drive-through at a restaurant. You're, there's no way out, you know?
So it doesn't show it in this. It'll be a two-lane system. The first lane, closest to the curb, will be the parking area. So you have to pull all the way around. You park, you wait for your child to come out. The second lane will be the through lane. So when, when your child comes out, you're already parked, you're in between cars already. Your child comes in the car, you pull out to the through lane, you go through the through lane to exit. So there'll be two lanes and they'll be separated so that it won't be interfering with traffic that is waiting and traffic that is waiting to leave.
Okay. And then, and is there some plan to keep them from even that second lane stopping and waiting for their child? I mean, you see it at the airport. I, I, that's the only visual I had in mind. You see it at the airport. People stop where they want to stop. And it's like, how dare you tell me not to stop here because my kid goes here or whatever their, whatever their reasoning is. So what's, what keeps them from stopping in any of the lanes?
So again, it comes back to 95% of our community, 95% of our parents do follow our requested guidelines. We just have to be diligent and continuously help the other 5% remember what those expectations are. And that's really the breast of it. And, you know, through constant communication, you know, constant conversations. And I will tell the council, as, as an educator, the best, the best people to help the parents stay within the guidelines are their children. And we see that, that the children will tell mom or dad, well, you go, no, you got to move over. And we see it all the time. So we have to educate and continue to educate and continue to help them understand. And I truly believe that over time, it becomes conditioned, you know, and that, that's our goal.
And then also, you know, plus a visual aid, maybe if they do that, you know, one of the people, the guard, the guards or whoever is there standing by, you know, they hand them a bad boy or bad girl sticker. And if they get one, the kid gets embarrassed because they got a bad boy or bad girl sticker. Their parents got one. Anyway, silly idea, but it, sometimes it works. That's it. Thank you.
I, I do want to say one more thing. This could be in the agreement. But I, when I go past by like some of the middle schools and elementary schools, I know every three, four years, you guys budget to re-stripe. Because this is such a long process, I would ask that it's a yearly re-stripe of where it says only out, because what we don't want it to do is fade and be like, oh, you know, when Joe Mosala was here, he used to do it. No, there's a contract that says you have to do it.
So we, we can add that to the contract.
I would.
Yeah. And what, what we do is each year within our budget, we set aside a specific amount of funds. So over a three, five-year period where money is set aside for things as such, so that we have that money ready to handle.
This specific location, and I'm not asking for the rest, but this specific location, because there's a two-lane, there's one pulling to the right, we're using, you know.
Yeah.
We want, you know, there's going to be a crosswalk where people are going to walk. All I'm asking is in that agreement, let there be a, between the city and all of us, that the school district will re, repave this, not repave this, but re-stripe it every, every semester. But when you guys do, can I?
Yearly.
I, I could, I, I can tell, I can tell you with our striping, it's usually every three years. The striping that we use lasts one to two years always. We usually re-stripe every three years.
This thing looks good.
No, I got you. But I would say every two years would probably be.
So you're going to do a striping for the two lanes? Like you're going to stripe?
We're striping the entire parking lot. Will we?
Now I understand. When you do two lanes, you're going to take, be taken off parking lots spots on both sides. So that's four lanes now we're talking.
No, 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 no. We're striping the, the, the drive-through, like where you drive around and you, you're striping, you're, that's, I want to use, I don't, I'm using the wrong term.
Okay.
Striping is used where people can park. We're going to have it laid out where people know.
Yeah.
This is where I stop and this is where I go through.
Pass through and stop.
Yes. With arrows.
See like this? You're striped and then there's going to be another stripe like this.
So I'm saying that green line is going to be two lanes, correct?
There you go.
Yes, if you see right there, you see those arrows?
Yeah.
That's where the striping, that's where the lineage will be. And that's how it will be, the, the arrows will be there, the line will be there.
Yeah, but that's going to take from the parking spots though. Like when he uses the parking lot, it's going to take from the parking spots. If you're going to have.
No, we're actually going to be adding some parking because that lower area, okay, so next to the circle, the red circle, you see that white area? That's current grass. We're going to be expanding a little bit over there where it's actually going to give us a little bit more room so we don't have to take away parking spots.
Okay. Any other questions from the audience? Mr. Deeb?
Sir, my name is Ali Deeb. I'm speaking as the city engineer. I just wanted to say that this is, does it work? Yeah. Uh, wanted to say that this is a, a good solution to an existing problem. It's, there's no doubt. Safety, I mean, that's, that's an existing condition now. The devil is always in the details of, of the condition of the parking lot is not a secret to anyone here. I spent the last year or so looking at the design and construction of that existing parking lot now. To put it mildly, if you are to build that parking lot today, you won't be allowed to. So this is a, this is a huge parking lot. It has a very unique, it's grandfathered in. It has a very unique drainage system. And that drainage system is a combination of things that were done over time that you currently cannot have. So one of the, these things are a drainage that, that is, sheet drain to the east and west, to the parking, to prevent flooding. And so I happen to agree with council chair on this one, and we normally don't agree a lot, but this particular one, this project should be done as one project. So whatever we do to repave that parking lot, we need to maintain that in such a way that the points, the high points and low points in the drainage, since we're grandfathered in, let's do it the same way. So whatever we do, I did some survey on that lot and I did some high points and that confirmed everything we said because the county didn't turn any records to us. So it does not flood and we like to keep it that way. Now, the actual construction of that parking lot, I cored that pavement and it really is minimal. It doesn't, you know, again, we're grandfathered in, I won't be able to build that parking lot today. If I was to do it today, I will need storage underground and ponds and all that stuff. So what, what I like to do is if this is approved, I think it needs to be put as, as one project, whether this school does it, I have no issues with it. Bid it, do it, whatever, but just one project, one design, one, one engineering. So it's not, it's going to be to both of our benefits. I don't want to, I want them to accommodate it and, and also not hurt our part, our part. Because if I go to fix ours, ours is going to have to be fixed. You have potholes bigger than my car. So they're not simply a, you know, patch job. They need to be redone. So I think, I think it's, it's worth it to come out with some kind of a deal for this team to, we provide the design, that's fine, but I need the engineer.
I have a question real quick. Mariana, if you don't mind. Because I know we're currently working on the budget. I know that we budgeted for the parking lot. Is that money still there or did it go back in the general fund and we didn't use it?
No, the parking lot was removed last fiscal year from the budget and it has not been budgeted again. So it would have to come from the fund.
Come from where?
The general fund.
The general fund.
You mean fund balance?
Yeah, the fund balance from the general fund.
We have no, we have no money in the fund balance though. What's the plan?
I mean, there's still some money remaining in the fund balance, definitely not a lot. So we have to be cautious, but this is a project that we promised to do when we leased the property, when we agreed to keep the golf course. We knew the costs that were associated with keeping it. And the hope is that the revenues are going to come once the businesses start bringing in revenue because we're going to get 10% of all of that.
We need some cost benefit analysis on this. But, but we did budget for it. It was not used.
Correct. We had budgeted for, budgeted for it when we first did the lease agreement, but it was agreed.
And we used the money that went from the general fund. Then we didn't put it in a restricted fund. Because we never put it in a restricted fund and it was being used, we no longer have the money. It's not because the city council removed it from the budget. I want to make it clear. Not one city council member said, no, we don't want to fix the parking lot. The money wasn't used. It wasn't put in a restricted fund. It went to the general fund. Here we are three years later and the money's not available. Thank you. So Mr. Deeb, going back to you, I know you say, well, hey, I want to do the project all together. The truth is, well, the money that we budgeted for at the first part was going to do this part as well, which will now save us some money.
Again, this, sorry.
The money was never put in a restricted fund and it was, it went back to the fund balance.
My point is not about the funding only, it's about the actual construction. So instead of doing piecemeal and screwing up the grades and facing an issue that I, I really don't have a solution for, if it's done as one project, regardless of who does it, I, I will be willing to have them do it. That's fine. We provide the engineering and stuff and I'll be happy, I'll be happy to assist and provide whatever information we have now and they can bid it out and, and construct it. The concern is, do it as one project so that, so maintain the place and it doesn't flood for either one of us. We both need to live with that.
Well, you can.
Council chair? You could do it as one project, but in phases.
Yeah.
You know, design it, have a master plan and just do this, this phase first.
So, so Mr. Issa's ready to open for business? So, I mean, it, it, what's, when's the next phase? I, I think the next phase is, is now. I, I mean.
The good news is, we're in budget season. The mayor is supposed to give us a budget. I know he put something for the golf course and I hope that he budgeted for it. All right? Do you want, you want us to figure it out?
No, no, I didn't say that. I just said, I pointed out my concerns to make sure that this place is, is, is working. We both need to live with that.
I agree.
And if, if it's done by, by them, part of that, part of that lease agreement, make it part of the lease agreement.
What, the whole parking lot?
Yeah. Maybe 50/50. I would go 50/50. 50/50 is good.
Already signed the contract.
Just, just so the council is aware, I have a limited budget.
I have no budget.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah.
But I, I can say with what Mr. Deeb is saying is that Mr. Deeb and our team have been working together so that if we move forward, we do it where it's not going to be we do it and then the city does their own thing, we're going to work together so that the whole.
Are you an engineer as well? I'm not, I'm not a contractor. Okay. Is your, is your engineer on site while this is all taking place? There is a survey engineer on site, yeah. Okay. Plots, plots the site.
That's, that's, that's not, that doesn't, that doesn't work with the drainage.
I, I already.
I mean, I mean, we don't want to have a, try to solve a problem or cause a bigger problem.
Well, we're, we're milling and we're milling an inch and a half and replacing the existing. And the top of the grade is matching the existing. So we're not disturbing.
And how much you're saying this project is going to cost? If you guys are just.
We are, we are waiting on our bids to come in. Yeah, they don't know yet.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb.
So, so this is part of that challenge. Because it is such an old facility, it, it, it's a combination. So if you look at the actual drainage system, the, the catch basins in the parking lot, they're minimal, very minimal. They, we looked at old aerial photos and, and a couple of people that actually know that place, they rely on, on sheet drainage to the east and west. And there is a ditch, an actual ditch on the west side that goes into a holding pond[1581.21] that goes into a holding pond and the holding pond goes into the river. I went and physically located that. I even had a survey done to confirm it. It's, it's, it's a combination. It's really an old system. You don't see, you're not allowed to build it today. If you were to do it today, you won't be able to. So we like to be grandfathered in, you know, restore it to what it was to work for both of us at minimal cost. So I don't have to put an underground storage system. That's millions of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Deeb. Any more comments from anybody?
No comments. Anything from the team? Anything from Mr. Issa?
I, I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate the council. I appreciate the mayor's office. I appreciate everybody. I appreciate the Issa brothers.
Is, is Jason Purcell on here?
He had his hand up for a minute. He's there.
He's there.
Yeah, can you unmute him? I wanna hear from, if, anything from him.
Hey, Mo, can you hear me all right?
Yes, Jason, how you doing? I just wanna hear from you a little bit too.
Appreciate that, thanks. Look, I, I think the liquor license is a real concern. People have to understand that if you can't serve liquor at a wedding or you can't serve liquor at a steakhouse, if those businesses are really gonna struggle to exist. So if the liquor license was to shut down, I mean, it would impact the golf course, the banquet hall, the steakhouse in such a way that I just don't know if these businesses are viable without them. So I think that is an important thing to, you know, to really consider because otherwise the impact could be a concern on the properties here and certainly we don't want that. The second thing, and I, I really think this is an important point.